Lady call, so she's got to go. Good practice. I have. I have a. I'll do one.
I wonder what we'll have in the apartment.
Yeah. Yes, yes. Yeah. Well, she could get it.
The apartment never.
She had to do. I can't hurt the apartment. Yeah, we are, yes.
Oh, I thought you would get it.
I want your thing.
Well, I know. We lose teams that'll let go of it.
Right, okay.
So. That's what she was last year.
Yeah, exactly.
Your team is going to four tracks if you want. Pretty normal.
They are. Got you now. Oh. I want to see if you can see this. Good.
First, we know.
No, it was a trauma. Yeah. Only a couple of her. Sorry, you. Yes, I did. Well, she was. She got checked.
We're trying to assign her. She checked out.
I said, just sure. She was so. Of course, I hear. She could pay twenty thousand dollars, she goes, they want to do. Some more patients, something to try to.
Try.
She was, she don't live with four. I wonder.
Oh, some wants to.
No. Yeah. Yeah. Well, she thought about doing that. I said, well, put it on the market, I'm considering. She goes, I did. I'm giving away.
Yeah.
Take a little bit. Yeah.
That goes slow.
Yeah, no.
Is that wrong?
Every second.
What's that say? The function's four fifty-eight. If we notice a election like that, it's a long story. I can't. And I'm not blaming.
So you can make my app when you want.
I brought in a small. My house.
And you had one at the PlayStation.
Did you? Well, this was, we had, I don't know, we had up in a bunch. I brought down one of the smaller ones. So we had a good year. Well, I have the four fifty-eight official cell phone. Yeah, it's a bunch of them. Oh, yeah. We have plenty of them. So. I mean, the batteries. They don't have issue. We don't want that to happen again.
Guess we'll call meeting the order. What's the latest?
Regent's. To fly in the United States of America. To Republican, for which it stands. One nation under God, due to the law, for liberty and justice for all.
You see the warmth of the sun. Anybody note any errors or omissions of the town and area selectmen meeting? Eighteen minutes on May twenty-third, twenty twenty-three?
I moved it over twice and I didn't see them. They were only making motion, we accepted as read.
How was second?
They moved a second that we approve. Down the nearest eleven minutes on May twenty-third, twenty twenty-three. All in favor?
In favor.
In favor.
In favor. Any announcements? Public comment? If no public hearings are possible. Let's start with the items for discussion and possible action. Approve this time schedule? We can approve this, but like you said, before you fed it, it has all of a sudden to change.
Yeah.
Maybe put on the calendar for that.
Yeah.
And will we accept the? There it is. The six-month meeting schedule.
And the. They moved a second that we accept the six-month meeting schedule. All those in favor?
In favor.
In favor.
In favor.
Right, which may change.
Yeah, and depending.
Yeah. Well, that's because the holidays, Tuesday will close, so. Could do it on Monday, I guess. That's the cheapest.
Okay, update on the personal property tax.
Um, I included a copy of what was mailed out to Mr. Durbin. Have not heard back from him as of yet. He does have, I believe it's. I keep wanting to say sixty days. It's pretty short, sixty days.
I think we have sixty days. I see this.
Okay, good, so it's sixty days.
Has it been mailed out there?
At what part?
Has it been mailed out?
Yes, it was mailed on five twenty-sixth. Yep. So that's where that sits.
So we're still waiting to hear.
Yes, and Rob comes next Monday. Anyway, so he'll write up the paperwork that you guys have to sign.
Okay, update on the church. Choose a realtor.
Yes.
Now, do we really have to put it through a realtor?
I think it'd save us a lot of grief.
Yeah. And with all the Ts across and the Is dotted.
Right.
You have slipped something under somewhere.
Well, I mean, yeah. I don't want to be accused of doing things incorrectly. So the first, um, Sally Harkins said ninety thousand. We had the other comparable market value, market analysis done by Cassie Mason's Real Estate, Lindsay Gagnon, and hers, um, said ninety-nine thousand, three hundred thirty. So. Whichever you want, because it does have to be, as Lindsay noted, the subject property is within the right of way from Route twenty-sixth. So they have to get a DOT permit to create a driveway. Anyway.
That's just something you have to be aware of.
That's right. We would not be doing it, they would have to do it. So.
They must have any sort of, they have the, the road there. Or this. Whatever the name of that road was.
Oh, um.
Mulgus.
Mulgus Lane. They would have to talk to the people that own the land.
Right.
Again, that would be on the.
That would be something that's.
On the buyer also. Yep.
We need to have a, um. Should read map over this. Because the line is moving further over than what the line is.
So whoever we go with will pass it for us. Whoever you choose.
I don't really care who we go with. I just wanted to feel that it wasn't because we were a river or somebody in.
Right.
Mr. Chairman. Uh, would you discuss for the record the correspondence for the town's lawyer?
Go ahead.
I had contacted the attorney to make sure that we could, um. That we should sell the property. And for the record, Brooks, I emailed you back and said that you should not reply to the town attorney because that costs town money.
Okay, for the record, I definitely expect any reply.
Okay, but you should.
I am a free citizen.
I agree.
Stop.
No, you.
You stop.
No.
I am a free citizen.
Excuse me.
And I can talk to anybody I want to.
Well, from now on.
No, from now on.
No, listen, from now on, the only thing that people are getting is going to be a copy of the agenda. You're not going to get the package till you get here.
That is a violation of free speech.
No, you.
We are free speech television.
Stop.
You stop.
Free speech television. Money when you write to the attorney.
Oh, it doesn't cost anything. He didn't reply.
That, he didn't reply because I asked, you saw what I wrote. Anyway, I had asked the attorney, um. Let's see. I said, we had a town meeting, it went pretty well. I have a couple of questions about the church. I would vote, it was voted in the town meeting to sell the church, sell the church. Of course, we had a few people whom want to get a petition going to keep it. The meeting was May fifteenth. Um, we did ask why they want it and what they want to do with it, and nobody could give us a good answer. Um, they have not done so yet, and is there a timeframe for petition? Because I couldn't find anywhere, but I thought I'd ask the attorney. There is none. I said, my next question is, we had a realtor give us fair market value with her name and dollar amount at a public meeting. So the selectman wanted to know if we could get another realtor's opinion. And I wasn't sure if it was legal to do it the way I had asked, because I had given out her name and dollar amount in a public meeting. And then I asked about the schoolhouse also. And he wrote back and he said, and I'm going to find it. There's no specific timeframe to file a petition. If they do not submit one, it has to have valid signatures, which we do that. And then the board would have a special town meeting for a petition article within sixty days following the submission of the, um, petition. Um, the town shouldn't let the possibility that a petition might be filed to stop from carrying out the vote to sell the church. So, um, he appreciated that the dollar amount of church was discussed in a public select board meeting that was taped. But unless a town meeting set the vote asking for a price of the church property, the board is free to ask for a second or third opinion on the value. And the market will tell us whether anyone's opinion on the value is, is good. So.
And.
And Brooks wrote back.
And he didn't finish that letter.
It talked about the schoolhouse. Well, I didn't put yours in here because this was already in the pack.
Okay, can you read my letter to Casteficus, please?
I don't know if I have that in front of me. Because you wrote back and you didn't think what, um, was said at town meeting was correct. Having a tie vote, and a tie vote goes the way Vern told us.
Did you get a legal opinion on that?
No, it's been that way since I've started town business and since you've been in town.
Didn't Casteficus in his letter say, wow, at the very end of the letter, he said, wow, that's an awful, uh.
Small amount of people.
Amount of people for that amount.
To town meeting, yes. But we can't make people come to town meeting, like, we can't make people to come to these meetings.
So did you get a, a, a legal opinion on the tie vote and rather? I got a, I got advice.
Under Robert's rules.
I got a, I get advice from a lawyer that said, once you have a two-thirds to reconsider, that one dies. The original motion dies. It's a new game. The result is a tie vote.
But we didn't have two-thirds.
We didn't have a two-thirds vote.
You had a two-thirds vote to reconsider?
No.
None.
That was a tie vote. Or it wasn't two-thirds.
Well, it's on the tape anyways.
It wasn't a two-thirds vote, because if it had been, we would have continued discussion.
No, it was two-thirds, two-thirds to have the second vote.
It said thirteen yes to revisit, voted, voted yes, and thirteen voted no. So we didn't revisit it, because we have fifteen yeses to sell the church and land, and ten no's not to, on the original vote. And then I had written to revisit the vote, to revisit the article, thirteen yes and thirteen no's. So we did not revisit it again. So it was voted to sell the church.
Well, I'll have to look at the tape again.
Feel free, okay. So at this point, I think we need to move forward, because it was voted on a town meeting to sell the church.
Okay, I have to go with what the majority wanted to do.
Exactly.
Unfortunately. I mean, we didn't have the two-thirds vote to revisit it, so.
Right.
And you feel comfortable with that low amount of attendance? A lot of people.
Greenwood had the same.
Huh?
Greenwood had one, either one less or one more than what we had this year.
Well, if people knew the, the.
People did, no, it was, it was on the Bethel City same.
I know, I know, I know the line, I know.
What would you, what would you recommend to get more people at the town?
People called me.
Have a public hearing about it. Find out what people.
Town meeting?
No, have a public hearing before you decide to sell it. To see if there's any group or organization that's willing to take it over. To see if there's any, anybody who's willing to volunteer to, to do the upkeep.
But several people called the next day to find out what.
You're not a public official.
She can still speak, like you can speak.
Well, I would like the public officials to speak.
I feel like we've been talking about this for a long time. That's what I think. And anybody who lives in this town who doesn't know that really is living under a rock. I'm sorry to say it like that, but it's true. We've been talking about this, I think, for two years, since I've been a selectman, that I've been involved in these conversations.
I think it started when I was in Florida.
So as far as I'm concerned, everybody should be pretty aware of the situation that we're in. And if they didn't come to the town meeting, then they have lost their, their right to complain about it. If you don't vote, you don't get to complain about it. That's how I feel.
Well, I guess I got my complaint in.
Agreed, thank you.
Great, and you come to all the meetings and you come to all the voting things, you can, as far as I'm concerned, complain as much as you want. But just because it doesn't go your way.
No, I know.
It's unfortunate, I get it, but.
Well, it's just unfortunate that it has no historical value, because there's been so many weddings, so many baptisms. You know, so many things that are far deeper than the Sunday River Schoolhouse.
I, we agree. I mean, nobody's disagreeing with that. But the people that are in town, that had functions there and stuff, had called here and said, oh, okay.
They called to find out how the vote went. They knew what was happening, and they called the next day to find out how the vote went.
Yeah, and they didn't come to town meeting.
And they didn't come.
Shame on them.
Then their vote went.
Exactly. Exactly, shame on them. That's exactly what I'm trying to say.
Then I have my memories, so that was there.
But if we sell it, maybe somebody who wants to buy it will do something different with it. I don't, I don't know, I don't know.
Maybe they'll have a, a, um, what was it called? A meditation building. But again, I don't think it can be a commercial business, a commercial venue.
But a church could run there, because it's not commercial. It's a nonprofit.
I'm not going to answer that, but you could be right.
That's right.
Yeah. But anyway.
Well, this is a note the first time that we've had such a few voters pass something that we don't all agree on. But unfortunately, that's what we have to do, because that's what the vote was. I mean, there is a step that people could take.
I know, and, you know, I'm not going to be the asshole and run around with the petition. You know, I'm just asking you guys to step up and maybe, uh, take a second look at it, since it was such a close vote, and there was such few attendance. But, yeah, I mean, it's over as far as I'm concerned. God hasn't lived there for many years.
So, what's your realtor you're looking at?
It's in the town report, which we, if anybody can pick it up if they want, it tells everything that's going to happen at the town meeting. If they're interested, I guess they would, should have picked one up.
Well, we have it on the website.
Yeah. I guess, I don't do the website.
Right, but it is on the website. We made sure it put there.
I suggest we move on.
Well, I guess we have to choose, well, it's going to be sold, I mean, that was the will of the townspeople.
Right.
We have to uphold.
Right.
I mean, that's, as elected officials, we have to go by what the town.
What they want to do.
Voted to do. I mean, a lot of places you go, they can have fourteen different votes, but I mean.
That is the way we roll in Mary.
Well, it's just one of those deals that the vote didn't go the way I wanted, so I'm going to get another vote. And eventually, hopefully, you'll get what you want, but. You know, I'm, it's sad that it's going to be voted, get voted to sell, but maybe everybody should have, that wanted it, should have made a few phone calls and got people here. So I guess now we decide what we left there wrong. That's the rule we're going to take.
Sally didn't give us one in writing.
Um.
Nice handy pen.
She didn't do hers like that, she just gave me a one pager that I gave you guys before.
Okay.
She didn't get fancy like you.
Well, there's two ways to look at that. I mean, Lindsay knew what, what the price was, so.
Well, that and, um, Sally did hers for free for us, and Lindsay's charging us a hundred bucks. Because you guys wanted another opinion, so she said she had shot just a hundred dollars, and I said, okay, because.
Wasn't looking to make money.
No.
On it.
No.
I just wanted to make sure that it was kind of like fair.
Yep. I mean, just because they say that's what it's worth, doesn't mean that's what you have to ask.
You might end up selling that book.
Fifty bucks.
Yeah.
A hundred fifty.
Or whatever.
Yeah, put a price on it.
Yeah.
Get it somewhere to start.
Start, yes.
Well, I guess if you want my opinion, whether you want it or not, I'll give it to you. I think we should go with Sally Harkins, because she did it for free, she did it first. That's just my opinion.
I don't have a problem with that. I was the one that brought up the having an extra, somebody else.
And I don't feel like their prices are super far, far, so.
Like you said, we can put a price, whatever.
Right, yeah, right.
People can make, make offer.
There's, there's times, I don't know about this particular realtor, they subbed it, but there's, there's places where somebody might ask a hundred thousand and somebody offers them a hundred and twenty-five to make sure they get it.
Right.
So did you make that motion over time?
I can make a motion. That we use Sally Harkins, whatever the name for real seems.
I'll second it.
They moved a second that we go with Sally Harkins for the realtor to sell the church. All those in favor?
In favor.
In favor.
In favor.
I can give one.
Well, I just wanted to do the handover paperwork that needs to be signed.
Okay.
Make that a motion, you want that a motion?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion that our administrator takes care of the paperwork that needs to be signed on the, uh, church realtor and sale effort. It comes before the board.
Well, I second that.
They moved a second that we allow the administrator to sign the paperwork for the seller of the church. All those in favor?
In favor.
In favor.
In favor. Okay, update on the schoolhouse shed?
We looked at the, um, historic, Amy actually looked it up on the National Historic Register, and then Casteficus did the same thing. I can't see where the shed is listed, but he said if it was at the will of the people to, uh, re-roof it, he would suggest that we re-roof it. But we have two ladies that are on the schoolhouse committee board. Committee, I shouldn't say board, committee. And they pointed out to me just before the meeting that it is, we only voted on a lump sum, we didn't vote on anything specific. It was talked about.
Well, I do know, yeah, it needs a roof. But the sills and stuff are not in very good shape either.
Can I speak?
Go ahead.
I mean, if you put a roof, that structure won't hold the new roof, it would be down.
Yeah.
Um, when I read the historic stuff, it said that there might be an old slate, um, chalkboard in there. Has anybody been in? I haven't been in it.
I'll look the next time I go.
Yeah.
We can look.
Yeah, if you want to look, just. I didn't have the right shoe on, so I haven't looked.
I haven't, because the door was dragging on the ground. I haven't opened it all the way up, but I peeked in and it looked to me like it had been a woodshed.
Yes, yeah, that's what we think too.
With some junk.
Yeah.
But I didn't see a, a slate.
Chalkboard, yeah, that's what it said at one point.
Did I go in and really poke around?
Nope. Yeah, this was a long time ago, so, yeah, nineteen seventy-eight, yeah. Long time by now. But it did say that was in there, and I didn't, um, call.
I mean, is there a lot of stuff in there?
No, it's just.
Just there.
Yeah.
It's kind of like a woodshed, like all the woods out of it, with the bark and stuff is there.
Well, I think we should look in it and see.
Yeah.
I don't know if that door opens even on the roof. We can figure it out, yeah.
Well, we raised the money, but that doesn't mean that we have to spend it to do that, it doesn't make sense.
We didn't, right, and we didn't.
It's only four thousand dollars, you're not going to give everyone.
You get the roof done for that, but the, but the roof just covers up the problem.
And it didn't, and the, the, um, warrant didn't say anything specific. It just said, raise four thousand dollars to see what sum of money the town will raise in appropriate for the Sunday River Schoolhouse accounts. Four thousand dollars.
One of the other things that we've done is that it would be on the, I would say, the south side, to the hole like this on the side of the foundation, that apartments can get in there.
Yep, and the window that.
And the steps, the grand steps are unsafe.
Yeah.
Oh, there's a broken window?
There was, and there's a piece of plywood over it now. Someone broke into it two years ago, I think.
Oh.
Yeah.
I remember hearing about it.
And so they put plywood to cover that over, and then underneath the, um, the front door, there's a piece of, um, siding coming off, and that looks a lot of underneath, and the front stoop is kind of like wonky.
The schoolhouse might cover some of that stuff.
The steps have shifted.
Right.
I was wondering, and I don't know for sure, but, um. If it's a historic building, do you not have to keep the integrity so it's historic? Like, let's say it had slate, it, right, it doesn't have it, but let's say it has a slate roof. Do you have to maintain a slate roof on that to keep the historical standing for that? I don't know, I'm asking.
I want to say yes, but I'm not sure if that's, in Bethel, I know you had to, but I'm not sure if that had something to do with their code, or if it was, I'm pretty sure, because of the cold block building, um, they had to be careful what they did on the exterior of the building.
Because my other thought would be for the building, granted, we don't have a whole lot of money there to throw at it. I don't know if you could get somebody who's an expert in historical buildings and just do like an appraisal, so that all of a sudden you don't find out like, oh, the roof's going to cave in, or it's. Somebody who's an expert in historical buildings and just do like an appraisal, so that all of a sudden you don't find out like, oh, the roof's gonna cave in, or gee, all the sills are rotting away and it's gonna, you know, take, tank. I don't know if that would, something that the four thousand, we go for it, so that maybe every year we could pick one project and bring it to town meeting and say, okay, this year we'll do. Maybe new sills, because all the sills are going.
Did, we raised four thousand, but was there anything in the account left over that would carry over?
Uh, we didn't vote to carry any over.
No, but I mean, well, okay.
Yeah.
Some of that, some of them do, but that one probably doesn't.
I don't think, I don't think so.
Okay.
I'll talk my head care about it, but I don't think so. But I will verify that.
Can we ask another question? Is, we're.
Yep.
Sorry, that.
I'm trying to look.
Is there any evidence that says that that shed was constructed at the same time as the schoolhouse? Is it the same date? I mean, it could, it could have done, been.
Years later.
Nineteen fifty.
I'll have to relook at that again.
So it may not even count as historical.
Yeah, I didn't see it listed.
Mentioned it.
Yeah.
Would it be in like town records? I wouldn't mind looking at like, um, you know, the town meeting, like, let's say nineteen thirty, that I'm just guessing. And see if, you know, in nineteen thirty-two, they decided, oh, we need a new woodshed for the schoolhouse, and that's why it was built. I don't know.
We could also ask, Charlie's gonna show me, but Charlie Bean went to school there. We could ask him about the woodshed.
Alan went there for you.
Yeah, I think Alan did.
He might have, but that would have been.
He went to Sunday School very cool.
Yeah, it would have been before Alan, because Alan's younger than I am. But we can ask Charlie too. But I'll try to forward you the, the school register information.
And, you know, if there's something that we can do to help, you know, book stuff up for this, I'd be more than happy to help.
Okay. Yeah. We can do that.
Might be, I mean, that probably won't raise a whole lot of money, but if you had it open two or three times a year, with a little donation part there. Somebody comes and looks around, they might throw a dollar or something, but it wouldn't, it wouldn't raise a lot of money, but.
We did, I was on the committee fifteen years ago, maybe, and we did do that. We opened it on what used to be Sudbury Canada Days.
Yeah.
And during Molly Ocket Day and stuff like that, we had it open for people to come in and had a little.
You get much, much.
No. But at, at least it was open and got some air.
Yeah. I've often wondered why the schools don't.
Yep.
Bring kids to see what school used to be.
Exactly.
Because they can look it right up on their little tablet.
And they don't have any bus drivers.
It's too far to walk.
So it sounds like we're just still waiting for more information.
I would suggest we table this for another, another meeting, till next meeting. And we'll get more information.
Okay, next up is FYI, what is the animal control information?
Yes. Well, there was one, um, ACO for sixteen or so towns, and she's going to retire. And the one that does the counties, um, I don't think is able to pick up, because it's the law. We are lucky and don't have too many calls, so it wouldn't affect us a whole lot. So I had called Donnie Dorf, the county administrator, and said, hey, what are you thinking about, um, ACO? And Vern and Kim didn't go to this meeting, but I think they're very interested also. So they were talking about having it be a county employee, and that's the figures that they just tentatively threw out.
You know what? We've been spending.
Nothing.
Treating them, yeah.
No, we haven't spent any.
Okay.
So, but I don't know, I know they had a, before I started, they had a call, and the ACO didn't show up, I guess, but. The calls that we used to have were most, mostly at the skiway. People's dogs that.
Ran away.
That they let run around up there, and, but I think, um, security had been picking them up, and I don't know if he had a place he put them or not, and I have to check.
Well, Alan did that for quite a while.
Yes, Alan used to, and there's a lot of education that goes with it now, a lot of training and everything that they want you to do. So, according to this figure, they've been upset four thousand dollars, but they're gonna buy per capita.
We still call Alan, even though he's.
Yeah, right.
My wife used to do Bethels for quite a while.
Yeah.
And we'd get all kinds of calls in the middle of night and everything else, so.
Yeah. So this is food for thought, um, something that they're thinking about. I didn't know how you guys felt about it, but according to state law, we have to have an animal control law.
Well, it seems to be quite an issue trying to get one in each town.
Yes.
I don't necessarily say we need to do it or not, but I think we should continue to pursue it.
Yeah, yes.
Yeah, I don't think we should write it off.
Oh, no, no, but say, oh, yeah, this is golden, but no. Just wanna get your feel on it, because we do have to have something. In case we do have an issue.
It's like everything, the government has to get involved, and then you have to have all the certified.
Yep.
Jumbo.
Yes, it's a lot of training.
Well, the good news is, this is probably the first budget that we're the lowest number on.
Yes.
That I've seen.
I think they'd have to get together with a bunch of.
Yeah.
Different people from towns.
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
Right, these were the ones that actually came, went to that meeting.
Showed interest.
Yes, yeah.
So I'm sure they'll have more meetings about it.
Right, yeah, they will. Some of those people like meetings.
Storm updates?
Yes, the FEMA, um, the winter storm Elliot from December, we spent five thousand six hundred ninety-five dollars, and FEMA and MIMA have come through. FEMA's guaranteed us. Um, we're gonna be reimbursed seventy-five percent, which will be four thousand two seventy-one twenty-five, and the state's supposed to do an additional. I haven't heard from the state, but we had a meeting here. Joel and I met with, um, two people from FEMA, a guy from MIMA and another guy, he was another department. They came from all over the place. I mean, the guy was from South Carolina, the girl was from Colorado, and the guy was from, um.
I was thinking.
Puerto Rico?
Yeah.
Something like that.
I was thinking, finding the way to the little town.
Well, they, they did. One, one guy was a little late, but he got, you know, they've been to a few other towns around and, um, so, but that one's all done. The May storm hasn't been totally declared yet, but at this point, we have paid eighty-seven thousand two hundred and fifty-seven dollars.
How much of that can we, I, I don't know if we're gonna get any of it back from FEMA, but some of that we could probably put in under summer maintenance?
Uh, we probably could some, but I've been waiting for the wonderful auditor that we have.
Yeah.
She was supposed to have called me yesterday. She did not, um, and I thought maybe she was off, because it was a holiday, even though we weren't, and. I didn't have her much of a day either, so, um, unfortunately, I'll call her again. And say, um, what are you thinking? Because I think we can use some of it for summer maintenance, but a lot of it, I don't think so, but we've got some.
Well, they were doing some work on the skiway road today.
Yeah.
Ditching.
Ditching, yeah. But we have to have, um. Very detailed, much more detailed invoices than what we have now. We have to know which road they, what they did, if they replaced a culprit, if they upsized it, how much of an upside they did. A lot of steps they have to take for this, so they have. A little paperwork to send us from across, but. But FEMA said that they, you know, are very sure that this will be declared.
I would only think so, because there's a lot of issues.
Yes.
Other towns in the area.
Yeah. Some towns are still working on it, so.
Yeah.
That's where we stand with the winters, with the FEMA stuff at the moment. More readies.
Do we have any questions on the code enforcement report?
Seems about par for the course.
After all that, we will go on to the deputy town court report.
Thank you. So we had fifty-nine voters at the election, which I think we were quite impressed with that, not having a state election. That, that was actually fairly good. David Bartlett did win the school board seat for Nury. He was running against Matt Mallon, so we could have him back again. We have done our thirty-day notices. We had about fifty of them. We have been receiving payments for those, and at this point, we have approximately twenty-five.
Yeah, I think so.
Twenty-five that would go to lean. If not.
Which isn't bad.
Which is not, not bad.
Is there a, we send out what, twenty-five hundred tax dollars?
Yeah, that's very good.
Yeah.
Yes, and we're still trying to reach out to some people, because we just received some back today, and they don't, they didn't get.
Some, some of the addresses have changed, I believe.
Right, yeah.
So we just got some of those back and looked up some phone numbers, hopefully online that we can reach out to those.
Towne and the chief of.
I told you the FEMA stuff. Um, they're back at the joint select board meeting. They're looking for. Thursday, July twentieth, or Monday, July thirty-first. So.
Monday's better for me, but I don't actually wanna go at all.
So they're staying Monday, July thirty-third?
Yeah, if I had to pick one, yes.
I'd rather go with thirty-second though.
Yeah.
I'll tell them that. Boy picked July thirty-second.
Tuesday, the thirty-second.
Yeah.
It would be this coming, or it would be this coming Thursday, or next, uh, I'm saying today's the twentieth.
July.
July.
We have another one month. We have another one month to get ready.
Yeah.
Doesn't matter to me, I guess. Either I can make it or I can't.
Right, I mean, who knows what's gonna happen, so. My calendar looked okay for those, either day, but at this moment, but that, as we know, can change also.
I got two grandkids, say they gotta go camping, so I don't know when that's gonna happen.
Yeah, it's usually around, you know, around your birthday, so.
He also picks the thirty-second.
Yes. Okay.
Two out of three.
Yeah, well, if, maybe if. What have you ever done with?
Well, it doesn't matter what we say anyway.
Right.
They're, they're gonna pick what they want, and then they're gonna change it anyway, so.
Right. Okay, and the other thing is, we, um, was looking at the mileage rates from the, um, Fed's fizzle, and they had increased to sixty-five point five from sixty-two point five. We normally follow the federal rate.
Did we budget for that?
No, I budgeted for the sixty-two point five, but usually we have plenty in the mileage category.
I'm surprised they hadn't gone up before this was the price.
Yeah, me too. So if you approve, we'll go to sixty-five point five. If not, we'll stay at sixty-two point five.
No. They shouldn't be losing money using their own vehicle for work.
Right, true.
We don't have to stay with the.
No.
It's not a rule.
No, it's just what's typically been done.
And when did they change that, like just recently?
Well, we just noticed that.
Oh.
During a bunch of time it hadn't changed, but it was after a bunch of time.
Of course it was.
No, it's just, yeah, kinda like your postage receipt.
Yeah.
Yeah, July.
Just do it, you don't have to.
Yeah, yeah. So. You tell us.
Like I said, I'm a good sense. I think that they shouldn't have to pay for.
Yeah.
Our own pocket for doing town business.
And pretty much the only mileage is Joel's, and then when we go to the bank.
The rest of us is thirty, forty miles a quarter or something, you know?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion and go to sixty-five point five.
How was I gonna know?
That's, yeah, sixty-five cents point five.
Yes. I like the sixty-five dollar. That'd be, that'd be all right.
And move the second that we go to sixty-five point five cents?
Yes.
All those in favor?
In favor.
In favor.
In favor.
And the next thing I have is, um, been talking to Alan about the repeat fire alarm calls to these same people. I know we've talked about it in, back in the day, and, uh, what about charging a fee after the third time to the same multiple people? It's something we have to look in. I don't know how many other towns do it, if they do it, or if.
I, I do know there are towns, go ahead.
I, um, used to live in Springdale, and I had an alarm system in my house, and, um, it had gone off, it was like three times in a month it had gone off. One of the parts had gone bad, and the, the police would come and check when I was gone, the whole weekend that it happened, and, um, I got a bill from them, because it had gone off three times. So if it goes off three times, you got billed for it. I think it's like, at that time, which was many years ago, it was like a hundred bucks.
Well, I would say probably we're spending over a hundred dollars a call. It's a payroll probably. Am I right?
Yeah, probably.
Testament, after, after two or three times, that's not counting fuel and everything else in the truck, so it's just payroll.
We're just talking about like false alarm, kinda.
Yeah, we have a lot of.
Repeat.
Cooking incidents.
Yeah.
When the bacon burns and it sets off the alarm, and you get there and there's nothing.
That's why I don't cook.
And the people that rent the places don't have a clue on how to shut them off, or.
Yeah.
Or, you know, they don't think anybody's gonna show up, or whatever. So this was food for thought, um, something we can look more into.
I think we should consider it personally, but.
Why just worry about somebody, you know, having renters and turning it off, and then they do actually burn the place down? We don't know.
We're not liable for their mistakes.
Yeah.
Um, we can look into this.
And I think. Uh, next, where's that? Close at three?
Yes.
Because it's the end of the year. We have to do all the end of the year stuff on the year. So we'd like to close at three o'clock?
We did that before.
Yes.
Essentially, in our town report that we do.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Most, ninety-nine percent of the towns, some of them close all day. I think it doesn't take all day.
I mean, the twenty-nine.
At the twenty-nine?
Next Thursday.
Yeah, because we close on Friday, so yeah, it'll be Thursday.
I need that.
Who knows?
You need just have approval, you need a motion on that.
Uh, just your approval, yeah.
You got mine.
I'm gonna put it on Facebook right now.
Okay. And put on that we're looking for a planning board alternate, correct?
I did that once.
Oh, there are two vacancies.
Two vacancies, exactly.
Well, they're into alternates, so Medicare is still working, would like to have towns have an alternate with their directors.
Okay.
I think, well, most of the meetings, but there's other towns that don't.
So, okay.
At some point, we have to appoint them again for this year, correct? And we have to do that every year?
Oh, the, yes.
For the different committees?
Yes. We do that next thing.
Well, then we have to do a chairman at some point.
Yeah.
So maybe we should do that, maybe the next week.
Yeah.
And that way, maybe we can have that list, that who's on the committees and.
Yeah.
Different stuff, so we can. I mean, I guess that includes the section. I guess that includes the sects then? Cemetery committees, whatever committees, I guess.
Yeah. We can do that. Okay, following up.
Waiting on me, Andy.
I know, it's five forty-six. I'm putting your planning board thing out here. Five forty-six, make a motion to adjourn.
Second it.
And move the second that we adjourn at five forty-six. All those in favor?
In favor.
In favor. This might be a really dumb question, but what was the phone number here? Two seven eight four three nine two three.
I guess it's much easier to play on that.
I know, that's what I don't...
Thank you all. You're welcome. Yeah, okay, good job.
Yeah, because I've actually been working on a radio and...
I have a vacation.
Because I've taught for a while and they...
You do?
Probably used to.
And you do a lot, you used to do a lot.
Yeah, because I was always around running around somewhere. You're welcome.